Award.
You didn't have any?
None.
I didn't think you did.
No. Mile park flooded a little bit, but nothing.
I didn't even, the biggest tree limb I had down was maybe like a branch that would come down regularly, you know, it was nothing really meant by me. My dad over there in the Goslins, they lost that giant black walnut. And if it would have fallen this way, it would have been in my parents' garage. It's worth a lot of money, though. It was massive black walnut.
I did lose.
Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 17th, 2023. I'd ask that Joel Pries' rights for the pledge of allegiance to be followed by the prayer invocation. Alderman, Lancy, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we ask for understanding and direction as we act on the items of business before us. We are ever mindful that we are really experiencing the whole situation of the changing climates in the world and that we ask for help and direction as we deal with the various issues that confront us in the days ahead. Tonight, we also want to remember those from Batavia who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of these men and women. And also tonight, we just ask for direction and understanding and appreciation on the parts of the members of the city council as they act on the items of business before us. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Kirk, call the roll.
Miller. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vocal singer. Two absent, 12 present.
So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item four, which is the meeting reminder that if you're going to speak to us tonight, we ask that you come up and please use the podium and speak into the mic because this whole thing is televised and recorded for BATV, so we want to make sure that people watching on TV can hear what you're having to say. Okay, moving to item five, which are items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda. Alderman, Chantet, do you have anything this evening?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Okay, then moving to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals to the July 7th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $1,511,340. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,815,272.69. Ordinance 23-30, amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map. Ordinance 23-31, amendment to the official zoning map, three zone property to R4, multiple family residential medium density district, and to add a planned development overlay district. Ordinance 23-32, a conditional use permit for a nursing home in R4, multiple family residential medium density district. Resolution 23-88-R, approving preliminary final plan of Deer Path and Main consolidation subdivision, preliminary and final, that's for 2349 Main Street and 2399 Main Street, City of Batavia, that was formerly 38 West 284 Main Street. Ordinance 23-25, amending Title III, Chapter IV of the Batavia Municipal Code relating to amusements in the City of Batavia. Resolution 23-89-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Era Valadivia Contractors, Inc., for the 2023 Donovan Wilson Street Bridge as for cleaning and painting, steel railing project for an amount not to exceed $101,000. And Resolution 23-93-R, requesting a permit from I-DOT for the closure of Route 31 for the 2023 August 5th fireworks display. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read. I don't have a date. Approval of fireworks permit for the 2023 August 5th fireworks display. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read completely.
Second.
Motion and second. Do we have anybody in the audience tonight that wishes to address the city council on any of the items on the consent agenda? This is not, we're gonna, for other items that are not on, we'll do that next, but this is a special vote on that one. I don't see anybody. I was told we may have some, but nobody's shown up here, so I guess I'll ask the Kirk to call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf. Wolf. Sulfah.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving to item number seven, for matters from the public, for items that are not on the agenda now, if anybody would like to speak to the city council on that, something that's not on the agenda now is the opportunity to do so. So if you'd come forward and give us your name first and then give us your message.
My name is Barbara Bungy. I live at 118 Lake Street on the east side of Batavia, and I'm here to talk about the new resolution that you passed on the trash collection. I'm a newly widowed senior and have to work to pay my bills, unlike some people, but why am I here? The board, I assume you can hear me okay. The board signed a new trash pickup contract, and I called Groot, the company, and they said that they do not allow stickers anymore and that every household must pay for a trash bin or tote, whatever they call them these days. This, in fact, has doubled my trash pickup costs because in the past I have used stickers because I only have, I don't have that much garbage, and I pay $3 for a bag, and that's what, every other week? And it doubles that, the new, even with the senior tote, I think it's 3825 or something like that, my costs have doubled. And that may not seem like much to you, but as a senior on a fixed income, anything that doubles my costs is not something that I'm very akin to. However, it was interesting because Groot and the city of Batavia both said that you can no longer use stickers to pick up garbage and that they weren't available, but your local jewel store has stickers and maybe, and so they are apparently available, but it appears that what is being said is that you have to use stickers only after your cart or your bin is full, which seems kind of ridiculous because you can actually use a sticker. In fact, in your own city sticker rules, you say that you can use the stickers for anything, even according to the Batavia website. And it just says refuse outside the cart will be collected as long as it is properly prepared and a sticker is affixed. Okay, so if I put out a bag of garbage with a sticker on it, does that not count? So basically, what you're telling me is that I have to have a tote and pay the 3825 a month, and if I wanted to have stickers, I would have to have that in addition to that monthly or actually quarterly cost. So I guess I'm asking the question to the board, is it true that I cannot only use stickers and I must have a tote, a bin, a cart, whatever you call them?
That is true. That's the way the contract is.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
That is true. That's the way the contract is with Groot.
I'm sorry?
It is true. Every resident has, every household has to utilize a toter.
Why?
Because that's the way the contract is, and then the stickers are only available if you do exceed the amount that's in your tote for that week. You can then go purchase a sticker to use it on extra garbage, or let's say that week you have collected some leaves and some other yard waste, you can put a, buy a sticker and put it on a bag of yard waste.
So basically, you don't care that I've doubled my costs?
It has nothing to do with that. They didn't offer us any option. We, we put it out, it was, it's all laid out.
But they do offer stickers.
They don't offer, they didn't offer stickers as an option where you could only use stickers and not have a toter. None of the companies that came in for bids offered any sticker program, sticker-based program, so we didn't have a choice in that regard.
So why do I have to have a cart in addition?
You don't have to buy stickers anymore. You can just use the cart.
Well, I understand that, but I would prefer not to even use the cart. What happens if I don't use the cart?
You want to buy stickers and you're still going to pay for the cart.
I'm sorry, what?
If you want to buy stickers and not use the cart, you still have to pay for the cart.
Well, basically, you're handcuffing me.
It's not a handcuff. It's just the way the contract is for every resident in the city, in every household in the city.
I can't imagine that you've had, made very many seniors very happy.
We tried our best. That's why we got the senior rate discounts, and we talked to all of the various people that provided us. We can only, we can only contract with people who make bids, and the people who made the bid said they're no longer going to offer sticker-based programs.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify, this wasn't our choice. We tried. Our existing, our incumbent garbage hauler wouldn't, they were going to stop using stickers as well, and if we stayed with them, your costs would have tripled, not just doubled. So we went with the lowest cost provider and what was available out there, and we tried. We went back to a second RFP to try to get a sticker program because we heard that's what people wanted, and it's just not available. The garbage haulers were claiming that they have to drive up and down the street regardless, so they have, labor costs have gone up. Everything's gone up lately, so they're passing it on, and there was nothing we could do about it.
Right, you are passing it on, doubling.
Yep. Not us. We don't make a dime off this. That's what they're doing.
Well, no, but I think that you would hopefully make some kind of exceptions for people who cannot afford this kind of a cost increase. And maybe that doesn't seem like much of a cost increase to you, but it does to a lot of seniors.
That's why we insisted on having the senior.
I'm sorry?
That's why we insisted on having the senior discount available.
Right, but even with the senior discount, you're doubling my costs. If I went with the regular cart, I would be quadrupling my costs.
It was based on the old sticker price. That was based on the old sticker price, and as Alderman Serone said, had we gone with another sticker program, the costs would have gone up from what everybody was paying, so it may have been comparable.
Maybe then I wouldn't need to have the cart. I could just stay with the sticker program.
But nobody offered a sticker program.
But yet I can use a sticker on anything that they will pick up.
Because that is based on the contract, the design of the contract.
Right, but I'm saying that I can put anything out there with a sticker.
But you still are required to pay for the toter to remove your garbage.
Gee, that seems like it's against my rights.
Do you, do you put out recycling?
I had to recycle all the time.
That cost also includes the cost of recycling.
Recycling's not free.
Sorry, can't hear you.
Recycling program is not free. They, they build in the cost of how much the recycling program costs them, which is a loser for the, for the waste haulers. So with the contract we have here, it's, recycling's included. You can't just, they, they don't want to have it anymore where people are just putting out recycling and possibly dumping garbage in the recyclers and then saying, oh, well, we don't, we don't need to have a toter or stickers because all we do is recycle. But you see, the recycling is, is part of the baked-in cost of the contract, and that's part of the issue, is that a lot of people who say they don't put garbage out say they always have their recycler full. It's not free. It's part of the contract.
Well, I'm going to have to see what I can do. I don't understand why I have to increase my costs in order to satisfy someone else, but it seems like that's what's happening.
Yeah, can I just say, this was market-driven. It wasn't, it wasn't driven by us. We basically, we put out what's called a request for proposal. So we signed long-term contracts with these waste haulers. Our contract was coming up. We included the incumbent on the request for proposal, and none of the bidders from the marketplace came back and offered us sticker program. So we were actually, we went so far to push it all the way to the point where we almost weren't going to get waste picked up on July 1st because we were pushing it so far, trying to get a better deal for, for our constituents. We understand it was not ideal. We were not happy with the waste haulers, me especially, who does public bids and stuff like that. I thought they could have done better myself, but unfortunately, we, we had to sign a contract to get our garbage picked up.
Even if I don't use the trash pickup, I still have to pay the 3825 a quarter.
A quarter. You do, and that's not abnormal, so.
Well, for you, it's not abnormal.
Yeah, for the region, it's, it's not abnormal, so, yeah.
I believe you're still within the timeframe of being able to go back and get the senior pricing. Is that true? And do they work with Groot, Laura?
She already got the senior pricing.
Senior pricing.
Oh, the quarterly price? Okay, thank you.
All right, well, you've answered my questions, even though I don't like your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples?
David Peoples, 525 North Avenue, lifelong resident of Batavia, with the exception of my two years in the service. None of you, very few of you have been here when a lot of us who oppose something come here before the city council. We usually do not win, but we go away, the majority of us who, and accept the outcome. Tonight, I'm here on this trash issue, which is presenting a burden to the seniors. And roughly, you'll have to check it out with the streets and sanitation department. I didn't check it out, but I got a rough estimate. There's about 1,000 seniors who are on this, with this burden of this trash program. The previous trash collector, we were allowed to put out a small bag, and he would come and pick it up at a nominal fee. Now, the seniors like this person here, we put out the 35-gallon trash can. There will be, very rarely will a senior fill that up. Because I talked to one person at the library, she said her, her neighbor was 90 degrees, 90 years old. She'll probably never, never fill it. I'll never, never fill mine. I'm, I'm alone at home, and I'll never, maybe occasionally, very rarely, if I have a group of people in, I'll, I'll fill it up. One possible solution the council might look into, I know you've signed a contract now, but maybe down the road, you could look into getting a, like a 20-gallon trash can, and then instead of the 1275 or whatever it is a month, we could get that for $6, and it would relieve partially the burden on the, on the, us other people. One other thing is, you people probably know the postage has gone up, so also they require us to send our, whatever, a check down there, which costs us some money. Would be my suggestion that we, like the city has for utility box, we could have a box out there and just put it in there to save the seniors a little bit more, more money. And finally, as this woman has said, I feel for those seniors who are, can't afford this, and the only thing they have to go on is their social security check. They, they just can't afford this, and maybe the only couple of solutions is probably move out of town to someplace else, but anyway. Thank you for hearing me out, and I know you have a lot of problems, and this is one of the ones, come up and do the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wish to address the city council this evening? Okay, moving then to item number eight. You all got, hopefully, a memo from me about the appointment of, I'll call him former Alderman Conley, to be our newest member on the Batavia Historical Commission. And the background behind this is there are two openings currently on the Historical Commission, and we've had some attendance issues with some of the incumbents that are sitting there, so there was a time here last month when we had to postpone two meetings because we didn't have a quorum. So I needed at least get one more person on there so we would have, is it seven is on the commission, and this would give them six, so we just need four now to be able to have a quorum, to have the meeting. As I think everybody here knows Tom, and Tom is remaining a resident of Batavia, he had to resign his seat from the, is it second ward?
Fourth.
Fourth ward, to move over from the east side of town to the west side of town, and that's being done. So he's not going anyplace, and he's very intelligent and knows the city, and I think he's a good choice. So I would ask for a motion and vote on his approval. And one other thing before we do that, I'd like to say is the seventh position on this group is an architect under our ordinance, and I'm going to suggest that maybe at a future subcommittee, and Scott and I have been talking a little bit about this, that maybe we're going to ask to change the ordinance and just allow for the plant, for the Historic Preservation Commission to bring in or hire an architect on certain issues that are very controversial instead of having, because we can't find an architect with those qualifications in Batavia that's willing to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. And if you know somebody, let me know, and we'll certainly chat with them, but that's been the problem. So this tonight will, I think, put us on strong ground, but we do need one more, and if we decide, you're going to have to talk about this at a committee meeting, if you decide you want to, you know, change that over and just appoint another citizen, there's probably other people who would readily want to join and be a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. So at this time, I would ask for a motion and second for the approval of Thomas Conley to be a member of the Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved.
Second. Wolf.
Pardon?
There's a lot of seconds, a lot of motions. Everybody wants, everybody wants Tom on the committee.
Lehman, Malay.
Yeah, Lehman, Malay, okay. Somebody else want to say something about? All right, Kirk, call the roll.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
So I appreciate the council's vote on that, and Tom, we're very happy to have you continuing to be part of the city organization down here, so you didn't get away from us, so thank you for that. Okay, moving into item number nine, which is Resolution 23-092-R, authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate at 1359 Brandywine Circle. Who's got this one? Scott, you weren't doing this?
I can. We did not take this in front of committee to hold because of some timing issues that we had with the property, and we would like to move this along with our normal sales process. We did have some interest on our lot that's been for sale on Brandywine. It was listed for $55,900. We did receive an offer for $47,500. Because of the way we have to sell land under state statute, we do have to put this out for auction, advertise it for auction, so this resolution would authorize us to publish the notice for auction and then receive offers if there's more than one for the property. So this would sell both the lot as well as the railroad right-of-way that we own, that's former railroad right-of-way that is behind that property, too.
Reserve on the auction?
It would be the minimum $47,500, which is related to the bid, or the interest we had.
His plan is to build a house on this?
That's correct, yes.
I think what originally the design of Colonial Village, now this goes back to the end of World War II, was that they left that space right at the end of Midway Drive so that a street could be put through there and they can connect with the next subdivision, but obviously, the next subdivision didn't appear for about 50 years later, and that style of the houses is much different from 1946 to 1986. So there was, nobody thought that was a good idea anymore. I remember it being discussed at one point by the Plan Commission, and everybody kind of downed the idea and said, let each one be their own unique little area, and so that's what it remained, so that's how the lot came to be. So can I have a motion for the approval of the sale of real estate at 1359 Brandywine Circle?
Moved. Second.
Move by Alderman, Malay, second ball and sofa. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to item number 10, which is Resolution 23-091, approval of permit processing analysis study and permit fee analysis study. Scott, did you want to make some comments about this?
Yeah, this was at committee, so this had a nine to five vote, I believe, at the committee, so this would be moving forward to vote for the city council on whether or not to move ahead with the per, processing and fee study.
It's probably as time as due to do this, to reanalyze our fees for building permits and whatever, so. Anybody have any counsel anything to say?
I don't think it's necessary, and I'm going to vote against it again.
I agree. I'm opposed to this, spending $45,000.
Unbudgeted.
Yeah.
I, too, have opposed this. I would rather spend the money on hiring additional staff. I think we had a great discussion at the, at the committee level. I hope that we empowered staff to ask for additional staff members sooner. I felt like there was an, an air of, possibly, it's almost been adversarial over the last decade when we cut down staff, that they were trying to do as much work as they could with the staff that they had, and now that we are, we've returned to levels from beyond 10 years ago, it is definitely time to start engaging more people. It is substantially harder to do the work that they do today and remain professional, and I hope that we see more studies like, like this of their processes.
And I also just want to add that I think there's already plans in place to improve the situation, and they've already done self-analysis, and again, I just think this is a, it's a waste of money, and almost like babysitting.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
I'm in, I'm in support of this, only because I think sometimes outside consulting can be very beneficial to a department, to a company, to a business. Nothing against your department at all, just sometimes it just takes those outside eyes to help us figure out what's best, and especially as Batavia is on the cusp of incredible growth, and you guys have been incredibly busy, like I hope on the other end, this will be good, so.
I will agree with that, and with that, make a motion to approve Resolution 23-091-R, approval of permit processing analysis study and permit fee analysis study.
Second.
A motion, second for the approval of Resolution 23-091-R. Any further comment? You know, I just would like to offer up that things are very, very busy here right now. They're really falling behind because they got so much business. I was out a few weeks ago, as I know some of you are aware, to Fermilab where we, Governor when it comes, will supposedly need 2,200 more employees out there. And so there's a lot of, I've had other businesses and professions, I had a doctor talk to me today about, are we ready for this rush of new people moving into town? And we've got right now 549 new units either under construction or about to be built that permits have already been issued for. And so we've got some heavy-duty loads of new people coming in here, and I really believe that we probably do in some form or fashion need this staff. Because that Fermilab thing, which is going to unfold over the next four years, is going to be a heavy burden to bear as far as adding all those additional people to the town. So Kirk, call the roll then on the motion for the approval of the Resolution 23-091-R.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Nope.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
No.
Baron?
No.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
No.
Malay?
No.
Uwer?
Aye.
Eight yes, five no, one absent.
Motion approved. All right, we are honored tonight to have in the audience the Batavia Main Street folks, if you'd come up.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to start with Cocktails in the Park. That's this weekend. So if anybody, if you don't know, it's this weekend, it's our annual fundraiser at, from 7:00 to 10:00, right behind City Hall. We're excited. It's going to be a great year. Dinner Table is on August 13th. We still have tickets available, and that is to help raise funds for the Interfaith Food Pantry. Things are still going well at the Boardwalk Shops. July 28th through the 30th, they're going to have Wizarding Weekend, where there'll be lots of free activities and snacks for the kids. And other exciting news at the Boardwalk Shops, Throne Threads, which was the shop from last year, the macrame shop and the pottery shop, they've signed a lease in downtown Batavia at 125 South Batavia Avenue. So that'll make 14 in brick and mortar, so we're excited about that. Hearth and Hammer General is opening at their new location. Their grand opening is this Saturday as well, so check it out. I have been in there, and it is just a beautiful facility. And that's at 161st Street. The shop, the market shop, the town promotion's still going really well. We've had 269 entries for that raffle, and that, we're tracking the zip codes on that from 34 different zip codes. So we've had a nice showing. And then at the Boardwalk Shops, we've been doing a similar promotion, which runs through August 11th. We've had 80 entries there, and that is from 20 different zip codes. So that's all I have for today, and I have a guest speaker. But first of all, does anybody have any questions for me?
Cocktails in the Park, you want to just promote where you buy the tickets and everything? Same thing with Dinner Table?
Same thing. You can buy our ticket, tickets for both events at our website, downtownbatavia.com. Cocktails in the Park tickets are $40 in advance. The ticket sales cutoff at noon on Friday, and then at the door, they're $45. And then Dinner Table is $65. And then this is Kate. She's one of the shop owners at Benton and Maine, and she's going to introduce herself.
Hello, my name is Kate, and I'm shop number four, Benton and Maine. I sell front door decor and home decor inspired by nature. I've previously just been online, and I've done some markets here, so it's been very exciting to be able to see all of my things come together and come to life. You know, I'm a mom of two. My oldest is 12, and my son just turned nine. So it was definitely a transition trying to figure out if I could move from online to get my business in to some sort of shop space. So this was such a wonderful opportunity that I didn't even know existed until last summer. One of my good friends was like, you have to come down, you have to see the Boardwalks. They're so cute. It would be perfect for you. You have to apply. So I was like, okay, let's see what these Boardwalk shops are about. And I came down, and I just fell in love with them. I'm like, these are so cute. This is such a wonderful opportunity to just put my stuff out there, meet people, get feedback on my product, and just, you know, experience what it would be like to have a little shop. So it has been a wonderful experience. I really had zero expectations going into it. I was just, you know, like, whatever happens to this, I'm excited for it. Because you just don't know. Like, when you're online and you have great success online and you have that, like, freedom with your family to kind of like pick and choose, it's like, okay, like, do I stay there, or do I branch out? Do I put my feet down somewhere? What do I do? So this is just such a great opportunity to test it out and see what it's like. A big thing for me was how, like, how was it going to be with my kids leaving for the weekend? Because I've previously just been home with them. So getting the opportunity just to have my kids involved with my business more so than what it is online. Because they would just see me, you know, making this stuff and being busy and packing it up and mom, you know, being a million different directions. But being in a shop and just having them come, they come with me sometimes on Sundays and just seeing, I'm going to get emotional now, just seeing how proud they are and just seeing them want to be involved. And now my daughter's like, mommy, what can I make? I want to shop. I want to do this. And so, you know, I was so worried about it taking away from them, but now I see just how inspired they are. And that's just, you know, as a mom, you feel torn in so many different directions. And, you know, to be like, okay, am I following this passion? Is it going to take away from them? So to just see how proud they are and to want to be a part of it and how much they enjoy being there, it's just, it's been truly very fulfilling for me. And honestly, I just enjoy everyone that I've been meeting. Everyone is just so nice in Batavia, and I'm not just saying that because I'm standing in front of you guys. That was, I live in Oswego, so I come out here because I just felt such a sense of community when I came down to see the shops, when I've come down to the markets. I've done artisan a few different times. I did Winterfest last year. Everyone has just always been so welcoming, and it's just a small-town feel with a lot of opportunity. So I'm just very thankful to be here and meet all of you and to meet all the Batavians and just to be welcomed the way that I have. Because it's just, it's already been such a great experience, and I look forward to all the more people I'm going to meet and all the more things that I'm going to put in my shop and just see where it takes me. So, thank you. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, and best wishes.
Yes, and I met your wife on Saturday, and she's lovely and wonderful. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Other questions at Main Street tonight?
What does she want to promote? Do you still do your online stuff?
I do.
Do you want to promote like your Etsy page or something, or whatever you have?
Yep, so it's just etsy.com/shop/betonmain. But I would love for you to come and visit me at the Boardwalks too. So, but that's my website, and you can check out my stuff on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to item 12, the Administrator's Report. Laura?
Evening, Mayor, City Council. The Fireworks Committee has informed us that the fireworks have been rescheduled to August 5th at 9 o'clock PM. City staff have met with both North Aurora and Mooseheart as part of our application for the road diet on Route 31. And both of those parties were both very supportive of the project moving forward. The senior leadership team is more than halfway through our pilot program for effective leadership development. It's a program that we're piloting to roll out to other leaders and aspiring leaders within our organization. And the next department we will begin this, having this training with is the Fire Department, and we expect those classes to begin later this year. The Plan Commission meets this week on Wednesday, and on that agenda is a discussion regarding adding tree preservation requirements to the subdivision regulations, and these have been reviewed by the Batavia Tree Commission. Also, under consideration is a proposed moratorium for the LI and GI properties on the South River Street overlay district. In Public Works, we're going to have some big work going on right outside this building. Resurfacing of Island and West Government Center parking lot is scheduled to commence probably this week. Right, Gary?
Yeah. And so if you are visiting City Hall, it's recommended that you park either farther south on Island Street and/or on Houston Street if you are visiting us, because we're going to have all sorts of changing traffic patterns around this building. We are performing soil boring work in the Carriage Crest neighborhood. This is part of the large drainage project. And this work is needed to ensure that we have a better understanding of the subsurface conditions before engineering can be finalized. And we are still on track for construction in the spring of 2024. You will notice a lot of work being done along Wilson Street, and this is for lead water service line replacement. And this is going to be occurring over the next few weeks, so we ask for people's patience. What we're trying to do is get all of this work done and completed prior to the start of the school year, because we know that's going to be a heavily-traveled road. And then I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the city staff, all of the men and women who stayed up all night on Friday night following the storm that we had. And it ranges throughout this organization, whether it is the police records departments, the officers out there on patrol, Public Works, the streets departments, the electric department. While all of us are standing inside our house and watching all of, you know, the turmoil that is going on outside, they leave their homes and head out in the dark to do some very, in some cases, some very dangerous work to make sure that all of us are safe and that our lights get turned on ASAP. It's one of the true benefits of having our own electric utility is that these are our neighbors, and these people are incredibly dedicated. And just wanted to say a special thank you to them. And this is the second time this season that they have had to come out for, and that's kind of an unusual situation that we have two of these severe incidents. And that's all I have today, unless anybody has any questions for me? Yes, Alderman Uwer?
Did, has North Aurora indicated whether or not they're going to try and extend the road diet further into their town?
They said it's under contemplation.
Okay.
In particular, up to Butterfield Road at least.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to thank the staff for providing the updates on where things were at, and then also to remind us that if neighbors reach out to us on where to contact them, because that's really beneficial, and the reminders are really helpful as we get it. And so if somebody reaches out, it's like, oh yeah, I know there's an email there somewhere.
Right.
So those types of updates have been very beneficial.
Okay. All right. How much is the questions for Laura?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate, do we have other business? Alderman?
Just a quick question. Barbara, thank you for coming in tonight to bring up your concerns. I know that that was something that many of us heard from our constituents, from seniors who live in our wards, and especially those on fixed incomes. It was quite a concern. My question I have, I guess, for city staff is, are there any organizations out there that can help with some relief assistance for those on fixed incomes?
There are relief programs for other utilities. I'm not aware of any for waste hauling services.
And is that something that it would be possible for the city to have a discussion about, or?
You can always have discussions about, yeah, it's a topic that we can put on. The concern there is how to identify where to apply relief, because we have a lot of people who are not seniors who also are on fixed incomes and find it difficult to pay for those services as well.
Yeah, I mean, this came, the contracts that were presented to us came as a shock to many of us. And there are many of us in Batavia who don't provide a lot of garbage. And for many of us, we can still pay for the totes, even though it's inconvenient and not fun. But I, my heart does go out to those who it's much more difficult for to do that. So if maybe that's something we can do, just a little, like some research, and maybe have a discussion on and just see if there's any opportunities to provide relief assistance for those who need it.
Other people want to say something? Or Piper?
Gary had his hand up.
Mayor, I just wanted to really inform and kind of get council's informal consensus. We do want to spend more money this year on tree trimming for electric. If you recall, we have an ongoing contract with Asplund, and the contract is basically a time and materials contract. And the city just budgets X dollars every year, and we have Asplund come in and perform the work. And when they reach that budget amount, that's the end of the work that they perform. Given the two events this year, we certainly have identified the need for more trimming. We may have some projects that will be able to defer. If not, it may be a reserve item, but the budget is $200,000, and we'd like to spend another $100,000 this year on tree trimming. And that's something we would formally come back to you at a later date for a formal budget amendment, but just kind of more informing you now to keep our contractor going, so.
Other questions? Or Piper?
Going back to the waste haul discussion, I know during negotiations, it was suggested that a few towns were able to get a pay-per-tip model, especially Wheaton. It's too late for us to be able to establish that now, but could we start laying the groundwork now to be able to negotiate for that in the next garbage contract in five years?
Already said that it's not available for us.
We had 15,000 homes in Wheaton, and we had nine. And so basically, whether, you know, the misconception is here is we drive anything, right? Of course, we can negotiate as the end user, but, I mean, the market's the market. What they offer is what they offer, and they're in business to make money. So, yeah, of course, we can beat them up, but, you know, at the end of the day.
They all said no.
Yeah.
Because I said the same thing. I'm like, you could make it happen. With 9,000.
And they could. Trust me, they could, but we don't want to. A previous council made a decision to go off separately rather than negotiate as the tri-cities. So there might be opportunities for the tri-cities to work together. We can do a nice ambulance service. We can do a nice 911 center. We directed ourselves to separate our garbage.
Why was that, again?
That's a great question. I can answer that question. If you recall, five years ago, the tri-cities did go out for bid together, and Batavia was the one who elected not to go with the other two communities vendor. So that's how we ended up separating.
Why did we choose that, though?
Oh, we used to.
What?
We liked to conclude our meetings by 11 o'clock. No, it was definitely, we claimed community driven.
Okay. Grabbing more appetite for that next go-around. Very good.
Any other items under other business? You know, I'll just end the meeting by indicating that Friday night, I had the opportunity to be here through the whole adventure, starting when it started. And I just can't say enough for every aspect of the city's operations. I saw a phenomenal performance in the records room at the Batavia Police Department. There was one young lady on duty there, and the phone was literally ringing off its hook. Several phones were ringing off its hook. She managed to get them all answered, and she answered questions, and she didn't write nothing down as near as I could tell. But as things unfolded, she called everybody that needed to be called and told them what was going on. But beyond that, you know, certainly the Electric Department and the Public Works, they were out all night, and we had some very, very serious damage to our system caused by that storm. Over at the corner of Spring and Van Buren, there was a big tree that came down on the lines, took the lines down into the street, and we had an explosion on a transformer and a fire. And then out on the, what, the old Aurora, North Aurora and Elgin Railroad that runs now as the bike trail between Hart and Redant Road, Commonwealth Edison had some big lines on that area there, and the tree came down. And the tree came down and took the big power down, I mean, the big power. And the Fire Department got called out there and they did the best they could, but there was 34,000 volt lines or whatever they were laying on the ground and they were just burning away. And they were, despite the heavy rain that was coming down around them, they were setting trees on fire and grass and everything else. And so finally, we got Edison to shut the line down and the Fire Department quickly got command of that. But they were all over the town on that one. I checked my phone after it was over with on Saturday and on Friday, as near as I could count, the Batavia Fire Department on Friday responded to 36 calls.
Forty-three.
Forty-three? Oh, you know more than I do, I didn't want to put you on the spot, you didn't know the answer, but 36 was.
Thirty-six were stolen.
Yeah, that's, that was really a big number. I mean, you know, we don't ever, used to have those numbers until rather recently, but now we do and there's, so, you know, I share all this with you with hopeful that all of us are taking all this in, because we are facing some challenges here of things that are growing and expanding and, you know, this Fermilab thing, I don't know what that's going to mean to us, but they're going to hire 2,200 more employees out there. And most of those people are probably going to come out on Wilson Street or the Fermilab entrance on the Kirk Road. And Fermilab, as you may know, has pretty well shut themselves down now, you just don't stray in there very far. So we're going to have a whole bunch of interesting situations, I think, in the days ahead and that the number of employees we have in each and every department is probably going to have to be expanded. And I think we've done a good job to try to keep it under control and keep the finances of it going. Hopefully, the increasing population that we may experience may bring with it some more tax dollars that we can add to spending on things that we need and personnel we need. But this is not a town that's on a retreat and going down, we're going up. And if you talk to other cities in the region, which I have the opportunity to do, and my job is the chairman of the Council of Mayors in at the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, there's some towns that are basically bust-broke. They don't have any money coming in, there's no taxes, they're shutting down the police and the Fire Department and everything else. And we don't certainly have that here, thank goodness. But, I mean, there's some places that really are hurting for certain. And so we're one of the fortunate ones and we're the ones that have a lot of stuff going on here that is attractive to a whole bunch of other people. I was talking to recently a number of people in the real estate sales area and they were telling me that the last few weeks in, well, the tri-cities, but specifically in Batavia, there's been very few houses available for sale and those that were enlisted had multiple contracts and were easily taken up. I'm led to believe that out there on McKee Street at Winding Creek, which is the new subdivision that's being built out there, they advertise on their sign that they can build 163 homes. So we have 40 or 50 under contract now that?
About 40.
Yeah, there's at least 40, almost a third of them have already been either been bought and are waiting to be built or are under construction. And so this is not a thing that seems to be able to be going away, it seems to be continuing to grow. And I think that's what's driving kind of the rebirth of our retail areas, both on Randall Road and in downtown. And as we heard earlier tonight from the Main Street people, you know, we've got a lot of people kicking the tire for businesses. We've got, I know at least one new restaurant that's moving in on the West Wilson Street Hill to the west of Olmstead's TV, which is the longest-standing retail business in downtown Batavia. And going right next to them is going to be a cheese sandwich restaurant, which, and the first thing you hear, first hear that, you think cheese sandwiches. Well, they got one over in Naperville and I went over to it, I was over there and I stopped and had a couple of the sandwiches and they were very good. And I talked to some of my friends who are city officials in Naperville and they've all indicated that that place is rolling and they have issues there only because some office parties on some days say, well, let's all go get a cheese sandwich. And somebody will walk in the door and say, I need 30. And so that backs the place up while they make 30 different sandwiches for this one office area. So, you know, we probably have, may have some of that coming to Batavia. So we're, I think, got a lot to be looked at for, forward to. Laura has already indicated, the fireworks have been moved now to the 5th of August and that's a Saturday night. And it was picked that way after a lot of informational gathering, because we had to kind of clear the field and clear the air over there, so to speak, because the next Monday is the start of football practice. And they wanted to get everything ready for the team and whatever. So I guess we're going to be, I've heard some of the team members are even volunteering to help clean the field on Sunday to get ready for their practice, because they all want to do it. So we've got a lot of nice stuff happening in town and I'm told our football team's going to be good again this year, so that'll get a lot of people out there to West Wilson Street. And so we're moving right along. And so we've had a lot of, nice things happened the last few weeks and nice things can come in various descriptions, but I will tell you that a very good thing for the community was the stand-up performance of our city employees on Friday night after we got hit by that storm, because without their good work, we would have, could have been in really deep trouble for several days if nobody had any electrical power. And they were able to get it all back on, put poles up and mounted, held them up with cranes off of trucks for a day or two that they could get everything stabilized. So we really have had a tremendous performance and certainly the police and Fire Department are right there alongside of Public Works through all of it and responding to all kinds of stuff. So we've been very, very fortunate. So with that being said, Alderman Sulfah, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Sulfah, second by Malay. Let's take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One hour. One hour.
And then I-